All right. We have a quorum. I now call to order the council meeting for the town of Danville. Today's date is October 21st, 2020, and it is 7:03 PM. And I'm going to first read the executive order from the governor before we do the pledge. In accordance with Governor Hillcomb's Executive Order 2004 issued March 17th, 2020, and extended by Executive Order 2044, council members had the option to participate in today's meeting using an electronic device. That means that any member who chooses to participate electronically must use an electronic device that permits simultaneous dialogue with the other members who are also participating in this meeting. Okay? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be advised that we are a couple of minutes late. We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss matters of pending litigation. The first item of business is approval of the minutes from the executive session held on October 7th, 2020. And we will take any comments from the council. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato? David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Did Tom say aye?
He did.
All right. So the vote is five to zero and the approval passes. The next item of business is approval of the minutes from the council meeting on October 7th, 2020. And we'll take any comments from the council at this time about those minutes. If there are no comments, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Second.
Do I have a second? Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. And will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
So by a vote of five to zero, the motion has been approved. And we will go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public comment.
Vice President, I've not been handed any forms of anyone who wishes to speak tonight.
There's no one who wishes to speak then that's turned in a form?
I've not had any forms turned in tonight.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, the public comment phase is closed. And we go on to the public meeting. Please be advised that we are making an amendment to tonight's agenda by adding item H, Ordinance 322020, an ordinance for an additional appropriation to the 2020 budget. First item on the agenda is item A, wishes to be heard, Assistant Town Manager and members of the government of Hendricks County.
So we have some representatives here from the county who wish to speak. Kevin Kavanagh and Mr. Whitstone, do you guys want to approach?
A while back, we discussed jail fees and we met, had two meetings. Our compromise is up here on the board, and they would like to talk a little bit more about the compromise.
All right. Thank you. Will?
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
How are you?
I am Matt Whitstone, Hendricks County Commissioner from District 2. I bring greetings from Phyllis Palmer, our Board Commission President, who couldn't be with us tonight, and Bob Gentry. And I think you know Kevin Kavanagh, who runs all of our lives, just like everybody here runs hopefully all of your lives. We came today, you know, we're, as you know, broke ground on the new jail not too long ago. And I'd say I'm excited about it. It's a necessary evil, so, you know, it's what we have to do. Danville's been, we recognize Danville's contribution to county government. We've dumped all of our buildings that don't get taxed into your community. We've dumped our jail. We have our county hospital here. We have a lot of things that we've put on your shoulder. And you've got the landfill to boot. So, you know, I don't know when our founding fathers or forefathers decided all this stuff would happen right here, but we are, we are super pleased that you have treated us so well as the county seat for all these years. We are just temporary holders of these offices. And a lot of folks before us and a lot of folks after us will make a lot of these decisions and work out a lot of these problems that we might have on all these issues that we do. We are currently working with the hospital, trying to move our county highway garage, trying to build some new buildings there that might house some county health departments as well as hospital health departments and hospital offices. We're making a lot of changes. We, we're growing. I think we're 500-plus employees today at the county. And we're trying to be smart in the way we grow, but we are in the process of doing a lot of that. One of the things we, in my eight years, and I'm down to 70 days as a county commissioner, so I probably won't be back again, hopefully not. But one of the things in my eight years that we have tried to do is when we do projects mutually with other government entities, we try as much as we can to reduce those fees and costs and those permit issues that come about. We see it most of the time in our drainage board, whether it be school corporations or other folks come with drainage problems and things like that. We try to help those out. We see it a lot in our road projects, probably most notably doesn't affect you but Ronald Reagan. We've had a lot of partnership on those projects and we all try to carry our fair share and do what we want. And we always want to pay our fair share and be a part of the solution, not a problem for Danville. But we have, we have come a couple of times, I believe Kevin's been here previously, to talk about the fee structure for the tap fees and things for the new jail. And I think you have up on the board there maybe the last iteration of that compromise. We recognize that there are things that we can't predict that will happen, and we know that inmates are not good users of the plumbing. The sheriff will attest to that as he's been in his office several times cleaning out stuff. And we recognize that. We are taking every effort in this new facility to make sure that this stuff gets cleaned up before it ever hits the outside of the building, but we're not going to be successful at that. We know that. It's going to happen. And we're going to have to deal with it. You're going to have to deal with it, and there's going to be a cost to that, and we recognize that. So we aren't asking necessarily for you to just waive everything. We want to be a good partner. We'd like to see a little bit of a reduction in these dollar amounts going forward with the pledge that, you know, we are going to make our end as efficient as we can as things come out. And we're going to, in the future, when needed, I hope, that somebody else standing here, Kevin may only have a few years left, but somebody else standing here will be the same mentality that as we partner on these things, we try to expedite those fees in those ways. One of the things that is always fun for me when I do one of these is to kind of figure out where we've been and where we've come. And so Kevin and some of our staff that's been around a lot longer than I have put together a list of things that we have partnered on to this point. And most notably was when we sold the nine acres for the new fire station at Twin Bridges to the town for a dollar. And so those kind of things have happened prior to me being here and prior to you being here. And there's a whole list here of things. I'm not going to read them to you because we know what we do. We just want to be a good partner. We'll pay what you tell us to pay. We'd like to have a little bit of reconsideration on some of these numbers, and we're just here to ask for that. We do need to get this expedited and done though, so you and us both can move forward. We are going to bonding. I think the commissioners have already approved it. The council has it at their next meeting, so we're finalizing numbers. We'll have the final jail specs November...
We'll have the final bids.
Bid spec.
29th of this month.
29th of this month. So we're getting close to needing to know what we need to put in the building, what we need to have, and what we need to exit, and how much money we need, and those kind of things are coming real fast for us. So that's why we showed up tonight. We wanted to come in person. The commissioners wanted to send one of us directly that had authority to make some kind of decision. And we may not be able to get there tonight, but we wanted to have this conversation and just come out and be good partners and be hopefully good stewards of Danville and your utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Whitstone.
Anything else?
Happy to answer questions. Go ahead.
Do any utilities want to come up and talk? Or you think it's, you're good? Good? Okay.
I have a quick question. So these numbers here, are these the numbers that you guys are good with too? Or what?
You want to address that?
Because this is what we came up with, right? Okay. Okay.
Yeah. We're actually respectfully requesting consideration for further reduction. That's a significant amount of money for tap fees for this particular project. You know, there are fixed costs that the town has that you have to pay directly, no matter what. We recognize that. And certainly, you know, we're not expecting to have any waiver of those costs. But we think that there's some flexibility in the tap fees per se and would request some extra consideration in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanagh.
Is, you know, I appreciate you guys coming out today. I really do, coming in and having a conversation about this. Also really appreciate the partnership, you know, that the town of Danville and Hendricks County, you know, has together. And it's quite a long legacy. And, you know, I think we can all appreciate that. As some of the tap fees, by going to bond, some of the issues that we don't know exactly may materialize in the future, but may materialize in the future from the new jail, during the bonding process, those, any future costs that we may have can be shared amongst all of our communities in the entire county. Would there be, if we were to reduce fees further, and then in the future a problem arises, residents of Danville are faced with that financial burden. Is there a way for that burden to be shared over an entire county in the future?
Well, let me, let me take a stab, and then Kevin can kick in. I think what you're asking is, and maybe, maybe not in the bond process, but let's say the guy flushes his blanket down there and we don't catch it in our grinder and we don't catch it in our secondary, and it hits the water main somewhere and it blows up like a balloon, and next thing you know, we've got to replace the intersection, whatever. I think the question you're asking is would the county participate in that cost? Obviously, I have no way to speak for that generation. But what I will tell you is that historically, based on what I've looked at between our partnerships, I see no reason why we wouldn't participate if that, in that situation. But it's going to be case by case, and it's not going to be predictable at all. You know, whether, what do we have to compare it to? The utility easements we're doing now, the new roundabout out by the fairgrounds and those things? I mean, it's just a partnership. If you call and ask, we're going to pay it. It's going to come from everybody.
Right.
If you call and ask. But that's just, that's the best I can do for you is we just have to call and ask, just like I'm standing here asking today.
I understand.
You know? I'm trying to build, we just settled for, just to give you an update, I know it's the other side of the county, but it helps transportation. We just settled a couple more eminent domain cases on Ronald Reagan. And, you know, I saved a half a million dollars on one. And that's huge, because you know how many feet of asphalt that is to get that project done. And so for some reason, because I'm probably on the lame duck side, they got me here asking for all the money. So I'm asking, I will stand there and go testify in front of the commissioners in five years when that main breaks because something, somebody flushed, and I'll say, this is the deal we made. Just call me. But I can't, I can't bind you, bind the next group. And if Kevin leaves after this thing opens, this one's wore him out. If Kevin leaves after this one opens, there'll be a new facilities person in there too. But we will do our best to make sure that we participate. You know, and I don't know that we could, I'd have to talk to council if there was some language. It would just say there would be a mutual discussion of agreement on an issue, that we could put in some kind of memorandum on this if you wanted. But that's the best I could probably do.
All right. Thank you.
I might speak to the physical plant characteristics for just a minute. The old jail, the current jail, if you will, didn't, wasn't constructed to really try to keep bad things out of the waste stream. You know, the prison population can put a lot of different things in the toilets and even in the sinks, and they're very creative. They have a lot of time on their hands. But the new jail, actually, we have the opportunity, you know, to take advantage of learning that from across the country and put things in place to help prevent things from ever getting even a few feet away from the cell. All the plumbing and waste lines from the cells and even the water supply lines themselves are totally accessible from behind the cell body. They don't go directly in the floor. They don't go directly in the wall. They go into a giant mechanical chase that's big enough for people to get into and actually work in. And we have the opportunity to stop things as it leaves the cell, take it out of the trap that's right there, replace it, and everybody goes on about their business. So we also will have much more modern and extensive water controls that will help, you know, some of our water usage and help protect the town's water production and also their wastewater treatment then to help, you know, be more efficient. The current jail right now, there's really no control over that, and it causes us problems and it probably causes you guys problems as well. But with that then, we'll also have, you know, a very robust grinder on the exit side of the waste stream, as we do now, that replaced with the old compaction solids removal. It was not very efficient. It was difficult to maintain, expensive to maintain, and when it wasn't doing a good job for us, it certainly wasn't doing a good job for you. So we've moved on from that, even at the current jail with a pretty efficient grinder. I can't say that I know that that hasn't been a problem because that information kind of stops at the sheriff's department. So if there have been problems, I'm just not aware of them. But we will have at least that same level of service from the new building. And then even for the future expansion, if we add the additional pods, which will be an entirely different body, a group of people thinking about that, but that will have its own utility fees as well as a waste stream. So that'll be totally a different connection and up to standards at that time. Physical plant, I think, is the best technology we'll allow it to be right now.
So do you guys have a number in mind?
Right? That number's not it.
Not given the next number.
They asked. Sure.
So apparently the estimate on what your hard costs were, not fees and permits and et cetera, was inspection meter cost and those things. Kevin, is this number down here?
Yeah, this would be the hard cost of the meter fees and the inspection cost. Money out of the pocket.
Money out of pocket for Danville. This estimate, I don't know who prepared it, maybe we prepared it, says that your hard cost fees are somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000. The rest, the balance of the original 216,000, which, or 251,000, which we discounted 66,000 to 185, an additional 10%, brought to 166. So, you know, hard cost 20,000, $50,000 would be my offer. You wanted the first number. That would be $30,000 worth of fees and the 15 to 20,000 worth of hard cost.
So 50,000 is how much more you want us to reduce? Or that's what you're offering to pay?
That's what I'm offering to pay.
Would you like us to get our group together and maybe invite Mr. Whitstone and Mr. Kavanagh to come and have, you know, try to work towards an agreement?
We do have the choice to take this under advisement or to have a vote on it tonight. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going with what Will's saying here. I think, I mean, is that what you think we should do?
Yeah. I mean, just because it's, you know, back and forth in this meeting, it'd be better if we're both happy at the end and both compromise. I think there's a way to find a happy rainbow at the end.
If you have a number that makes you happy, you tell me. I'll just...
Yeah. It's the utilities.
166.
For us, you know, it's really supporting the utilities because every dollar we take away from the utilities, we're building new water plant, building new wastewater, every dollar we take away is dollars we take away, or add to the taxpayers. So we just got to consider that. What are they happy with is really, you know, that's what we're looking at more than anything. And I think Tom was in on that meeting and Greg was in on that meeting. If you want to continue down that path and maybe, you know...
And I think we could probably even speed that up too.
Yeah. I think we could speed that up pretty quick. So you guys can have an answer. So...
Will, can you refresh my memory? This, what we're looking at right here is, is this, is that 251? Is it like our very, very first number? Or was this...
Yeah. 251 is really the total. So there's like a tap fee, and then there's like a materials cost. And the tap fee is really for the maintenance of the life of the, of the connection. You're asking kind of a guy who's at 10,000 feet here on this one, but that's like the life of the service and then also the future growth. So they build in a fee knowing that, you know, the growth inside that to keep it alive and then, you know, for new things as well. And when we're building the new water to plant someday and we're building the new wastewater, we do need to have, you know, some funds for that.
Okay.
The partnership is really an important thing for the town though.
Other than tonight, when are you guys looking for a response? What would be your second choice?
My second choice was, sorry, looking at numbers again?
Sure.
Just cut that 166 in half at 80,000 bucks and we'll call it a deal and...
83250?
Whatever it is. And we'll call it a deal and off I go.
One more quick question, and I know you guys had addressed this, but I had, I'd forgotten. In the plan for the jail, there is a additional space, for lack of a better term, for, for future expansion, correct?
Not as much as I wanted, but yeah.
What is, what is the additional capacity of, of a future expansion in the, in the future?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'd say it'd be approximately 500 beds. We're going, this new facility will have about 540 beds, the way that they're counted. Those aren't necessarily all cells. Some of those are holding cells. Some of those are cells in the infirmary that may or may not be occupied, but they're still counted. And since that central core where the infirmary and some of the other ancillary services where prisoners still need to be held are, wouldn't be counted in the second addition of blocks. So I'm going to say somewhere around 500, if that's the max.
That's the real answer from the facts. Now, let me give you the political answer, is that the original number of beds is not established from the commissioner's perspective yet. Kevin would say there's going to be 540. I can tell you that at least one commissioner would like to see a reduction in that number to start. Don't know where that'll end up. So just, the politicians haven't weighed in on the number yet.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes. Thank you.
Give us just a second. We're having this prop to caucus in the background.
Well, I was going to say, Will, if you had anything additional to add.
I think they really would like to meet and talk about it just because they don't want to make any rash decisions because it affects them in the long run. And I think we can probably, if we sit down all together, I'm sure we can come up with something. And if it, if it's just Kevin or whatever, whatever, and we'll come up with some, something and come back to you. But I know they want to move pretty fast, so...
I can meet tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah. But approval wise?
That's the kicker is that it would have to be approved by the council. Is that correct, Jewel? If we agree to a reduction?
It is. So the council is the utility board as well, so they would have to make a determination on the reduction, so that would take official action by the council. But I agree with Will. I think it is prudent to sit down, to talk through all of the ramifications of fee cuts. And then at the end of it, what I really would like to do is work with the county's attorney to come up with a document where we kind of line out some of these things that the council has been talking about tonight, say certain obligations that are on people or different bodies, and take care of it that way, so that there's a written document that everybody can refer back to regarding the agreement on fees, if there is one. And so we don't have to call people back in five years later to testify in front of the board, that we lock everything down.
Kevin and I actually had already discussed that. Trying to finalize the, what that is.
Part.
So, Will, do you believe that the committee can have this for the agenda for the first November meeting? Yes. Does the first meeting...
The first meeting is November 7th.
Is that going to be soon enough for you guys?
Try to move faster.
We have to get there. We have to have a meeting.
November 4th?
Election day is November 3rd.
Oh.
We could do a...
Special session.
Can we do a special session on that, Jewel? We have to...
You can. You just have to have 48 hours notice to the newspaper.
You all right with that?
Yes.
Yeah. We can do that.
The council has consented us to call this official session, wants the body of the utilities, which, we'll, we'll... All right. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming today.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item B, Marion Township Fire Contract. Mr. Morgan?
Do you want in on this? You want me to?
Okay. I've had a little dealing with this contract over the last 19 years, so...
I figured that.
The, before you tonight is a contract to provide fire protection services to Marion Township and its citizens. It is up for your approval tonight for signature. The dollar amount has not changed. Unless something has dramatically changed since I left the fire service, Marion Township constitutes less than 4% of the run total for the fire department. So the dollar amount that is being requested is pretty appropriate to the number of runs that are being performed out there.
And it's really important to the people who live out there.
It is.
Do we have any comments? Then do I have a motion to approve item B, a request from the town manager to approve the 2021 fire protection contract for Marion Township?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All right. It has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of five to zero, the motion carries. Item B is approved.
Vice President, I want you all to sign this. I'll need it because I'll have to take it to Mr. Pato in the morning.
Okay.
Have him sign as well, and then send it to Marion Township.
All right. So we will sign this contract. Meanwhile, going on, the next item on the agenda is item C, Resolution 10, 2020, a resolution to transfer funds.
Madam Vice President, members of the council, good evening. Come before you tonight with Resolution 10, 2020. In this resolution, I'm asking to move $8,000 from overtime, $8,000 from part-time, both of them funds would be moved to my 380, other services and charges. This is to help me update my radar, handheld radars, and outfit new officers and to pay a couple bills. Basically, I'm making sure that I have enough funds to the end of the year to pay my bills that I usually have to come in at the end of the year and do a little bit of updating.
Do we have any comments?
I'm just asking, I'm assuming that you have those in that line item?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, he has sufficient funds for the transfer.
Very good. Thank you.
Does this is the resolution?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve item C, a resolution to transfer funds between major budget classifications?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
By a vote of five to zero, the motion carries and item C is approved. Thank you, Chief.
And I will need this once you sign it so I can take it to Mr. Pato's house and get him to sign it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item D, Ordinance 28, 2020, an ordinance to amend the golf cart ordinance. And town manager, again, please.
Madam Vice President, this is up for a second read and therefore can be acted upon tonight. In working with staff and the police department, we would like to have a, an ordinance, we'd like to amend the golf cart ordinance that requires a registration process so that we can ensure that the golf carts that are on our roads, because we do have the responsibility, since we passed an ordinance to allow them, is our responsibility to make sure that those vehicles are safe. So that's what we're looking for. The funds for this registration would go into the general fund.
Okay, and are there any questions or comments?
I do have a question, and this was said last time, I apologize, but when does this go into effect?
We'd like to have it, in fact, by January 1.
Okay, so they got plenty of time to see these and prepare.
Absolutely. And in fact, it is our goal to be in preparation to have the stickers during the winter months so the people can call us during the winter.
Yeah, when they're using it.
Do the inspections while they're sitting in their garage.
Right, okay.
Who will inspect them?
Be the police department and the code enforcement officer.
Anyone else have a comment, concern? Understand it's $25 a year?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if that's something you wish to revisit at a later date, you are more than welcome to have a work study and revisit that.
Then do I have a motion to approve item D, the ordinance to amend the golf cart ordinance?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Thank you, by a vote of five to zero, the motion carries and item D is approved.
I will need this returned to me.
This is, wow. Okay. Now on to item E on the agenda, Ordinance 29, 2020, an ordinance to amend the 2020 budget.
This ordinance was presented at the last council meeting. This is to reduce our overall 2020 budget. Cuts were made by the department heads, and this is just up for approval this evening.
I'll take comments from the council. If there are no comments, do I have a motion to approve item E, the ordinance to amend the 2020 budget?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 29, 2020, ordinance, ordinance to amend 2020 budget.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, will the clerk treasurer please take the roll call?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
It's, by a vote of five to zero, the motion carries and item E is approved. Next item on the agenda is item F, Ordinance 30, 2020, an ordinance to establish the 2021 budget. Jenny?
This ordinance was presented at the last council meeting as well, and a public hearing was held. This is the ordinance to establish the 2021 budget.
I will take comments from the council.
So I have a quick comment. I, earlier today, I had a conversation, phone conversation with Jenny, and I know that during our last budget work study, there were some things towards the end of that discussion that we kind of ran out of time on. So with my questioning with clerk treasurer was, since we are able to amend the 2020 ordinance that we just passed, that, of a budget that was done in 2019, that there's still the ability to make some, I'll say, adjustments through both appropriations and, Jenny, what was the other term?
Additional appropriations or reduction.
Or reductions. So those are some things that we could still entertain and possibly discuss, so would like to just throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve item F, an ordinance to establish the 2021 budget?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of five to zero, the motion carries and item F is approved.
Madam Vice President, on this particular signature page, as you can see, everyone's listed by their names, there is an "I," a "N," and a "staying," and there's a place for signature.
Okay.
And again, I'll need this so I can take this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank everyone for their hard work, all the department heads and the council and, and town employees. A lot goes in, as you all know, to working on a budget, so, and I want to thank TAF Law as well, so I just appreciate everything everybody did, and I wanted to express that.
Thank you, Jenny, we appreciate your hard work as well.
And we hope you get better.
Thank you. You too.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I, where are we? Oh, we're moving on, right?
Yes.
To item G, a capital expenditure request, wastewater department.
Good evening. What this request is for is we have a UV disinfection system. We run April through October. We're about to shut it off at the end of the month. The computer screen monitor what controls the whole thing, you can't read the screen or just almost can't read the screen, you got to cover it up and, and look at it. They've quit producing this exact one. So what we're asking for is to go ahead and to replace it and get it going because we need it to go by March 1st when we start this system back up to deal with state rights.
I thought it was April 1st.
This, or me?
I thought it was April 1st, I'm sorry.
It's April through October. We tried to have it ready to go by March 1st, so we have, make sure that it's 100% because we have a company come in and inspect it and make sure it's ready to go. But the actual date that you have to disinfect is April 1.
Okay.
So this is coming on next year's budget, the money's already there, we're not asking for more money, we just want to move forward on it to get it, get it going before, and at the end of the year, this price is also going up by 10%. As long as I order before the end of December, we can get it at a cheaper price.
Very good.
So.
This is something I never knew existed, didn't know that, what it did, you know, or anything. It's interesting.
It is. Neat system.
Do I have any comments from the council? Then if there are no comments, do I have a motion to approve item G, a capital expenditure request from the wastewater department?
I make a motion that we approve the department expenditure request from wastewater.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk treasurer now take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
And Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Very good. By a vote of five to zero, this motion carries and item G is approved.
And Mark, can you set that capital expenditure request to the side? I need to sign that, please.
Yes, ma'am. I have it already put to the side.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda is item H, Ordinance 32, 2020, an ordinance for additional appropriation to the 2020 budget. Jenny?
This is for the GO bond that are, have gone through the process and will be closing the end of this month. First financial was the successful bidder at a rate of 1.44, so we are extremely pleased with that. This ordinance is just allowing for us to create the GO bond accounts and to expend and accept the revenue, of course.
Madam Vice President, staff is requesting a suspension of the rules tonight so this can be passed if the council is so in favor.
Then do I have a motion to suspend the rules tonight?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules to address ordinance 32, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Then the rules are suspended.
Welcome to, go ahead, call the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call vote.
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
All right. By a vote of five to zero, the motion carries, and now I get to strike the gavel. The rules are suspended. And we may now proceed. Do I have a motion to approve item H, Ordinance 32, 2020, an ordinance for additional appropriation to the 2020 budget?
I make a motion that we accept this insanely low interest rate associated with ordinance 32, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk treasurer please take a roll call vote?
Greg Van Leeuwen?
Aye.
Nancy Levitt?
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
By a vote of five to zero, the motion carries and item H is approved. All right. Are there any reports from the council on activity or any comments from council or staff?
Yes, and Mark has a few. All right, come on down.
From the department heads, this is the following updates that I have. Public Works, if you, you all got the paving schedule for County Road 150 East, they're working sidewalks with Stormwater Department, they're working on the concrete apron for Station 92, and they start leaf pickup next week. I will say that interim superintendent Walker negotiated with the paving company for no additional cost. We're having heavier stone put into the asphalt mixture, which will allow heavier trucks to go on the road, so hopefully we will not have this same problem that we've had over the last several years. Water Department's been busy relocating hydrants on Main, on Martin Drive, getting meters ready for construction sites, they've been visiting some construction sites, and they'll start with nonpayments on October 26th. The police department, their reports included in your packet, and also they're waiting on perf to qualify their new employees. Apparently because of COVID-19, perf is only meeting in-person, or they're only coming in every Thursday, so makes it a little difficult for them to approve the new employees with everything. Fire Department has three employees that have started October 19th, a recruit class, and their first actual day off, out of, on their own will be October 31st. Parks Department's working on Winterland, his board meetings, his sign is still in the works, he's hoping that maybe next week they'll start getting the screens in, is that correct? They've got the Harv Ellis sign ordered, they're working on trail maps, and I think Will will want to talk to you about that meeting if I'm not mistaken, will you? Are you going to talk about trail meeting? Okay. The cameras, if you haven't noticed, are being installed here in Town Hall, that's what the little clippings, when you walk down the hallway, there's little, little pieces of rubber where they're cutting wiring and everything. And then Will's working a flagpole switch. We're going to be moving the flagpole where it is now, where it gets caught in that tree every spring, it's going to be moved into our little roundabout right out here, so we're excited about that. He's also working on Joe Hawkins Field, I think there's a dedication this coming Sunday, and that is going to be in field number five. Stormwater, Starbucks is, should be being demoed, the building should be demoed in two Barry, I'm having trouble reading my own writing, I'm sorry. Looks like you're working sidewalks at Kentucky and Broadway, Washington Street paving, Indiana paving, Clinton Street paving. The goodwill pre-construction meeting will be Friday, so they'll be getting started that. He's doing proof roll on Kensington this week, temporary certification of occupancy at Faith Baptist Church, and Mary Queen of Peace, their framing is done, and their new And just a couple other side notes here. We sent Melin, we, I don't know if I want to say sent, Melin Heron has been taking grant schools online, and we received the first check from the CARES Act of $23,124.54 earlier this week, and she received confirmation that her second application of $298,782.46 was approved. So, good for Melin.
Too bad she's not here.
Yeah, she was here earlier, I didn't have a chance to say anything, but, so, so the grant school seems to be working out very well, very happy with it. If you recall, we had, we had found during the budget process, and Jenny, I'll need you to help me on this, please, a TIF fund that was never expended fully out in the Commerce Park area. Is that, am I saying that right, Jenny?
Yes.
And it was 200 and, I don't know, 20,000? Call?
256,000.
I forget what the number was. But the money is, it is essentially in control by the Redevelopment Commission because it involves TIF money. So we have approached the Redevelopment Commission with some projects, but obviously we need your approval as well because you are the main body for this town. We've started off with some projects, one is for the roundabout, I think I showed you a sign during a work study that Will had designed for the roundabout, and so we, we've proposed that to the Redevelopment Commission and they approved it for a cost of $79,478.32. The other things that we had discussed with the commission were some of the turning lanes on Main Street, especially in front of Woodland Terrace, that's going to be a large subdivision or a large area that no turn lanes were put in. Also, with the traffic that Beasley's gets, we felt that that area deserved a passing and a, a turning lane. So Superintendent Lofton got some estimates, one's 21,300 for the Woodland Terrace passing lane, another is 19,250 for the Beasley's turning lane, and then 21,300 for the Beasley's passing lane. And again, redevelopment did approve all these, and so I'm seeking your consensus to move forward. The sign, obviously, there's going to be some hoops we're going to have to jump through with design review, plan commission, it won't, it won't go up overnight, so, but before we expend any time, further time on it, we wanted to get your guys' approval. Like I said, really just needs a consensus.
I like it, like it.
Yes. Are we in agreement? Yes.
Jenny?
I did have a question, though.
Can Jewel hear me? I thought it took a motion. It doesn't take a motion?
It should have a motion to approve.
It'll take a motion, sorry. Go ahead.
Would Woodland Terrace not be responsible for turning lanes into their?
It was never designed that way, is that right, Barry?
Yeah, there's turn lanes, there's not a passing one.
Right. What we're, what we're concerned about is if someone is westbound and they're going to turn left into Woodland Terrace.
I got you.
There's no room for anybody to pass around them.
I got you.
So we felt like to keep traffic flowing, that a passing lane was probably a good idea there, so. Go ahead, Will.
Also trails, the leftovers.
Haven't got to that point yet. These are the only things that were approved, right, the red. These are the only things that were approved, right, the Redevelopment Commission, so I thought I better get their approval first. So I guess I do need a motion for these four items.
Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the funding for a sign, the turning lanes, and then a passing line.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does that work, Mark?
Yes, works for me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Work for the attorney?
Sorry, I added on you. Yeah, I'm fine with that motion. It encompasses everything you guys need.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Chris Gerald?
Aye.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been approved five to one, so the motion carries.
Thank you. Just so you know, the balance, we still have to get with the Redevelopment Commission and get their approval on the next several things. One is, there is a drainage issue through Commerce Park, and so Barry is giving me an estimate on how much it'll cost to get that drainage issue fixed. It's been long, long, long overdue. And then anything that's left, it's going to be a shock, Will would like to have it so that we can put trails and sidewalks out in that area. If you're familiar, a lot of sidewalks out there literally have a sign that says "End of Sidewalk," and if you're not paying of attention, it can be pretty painful, so his goal is to make those sidewalks actually go somewhere.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I had, I'll just pass this around, we had talked to Joan Miller at the locker room. As most of you know, this is our current pin. It's actually designed off of the Chamber of Commerce logo from, I don't know how many years ago, but you really can't, you can't see Danville on there unless you're like this close to us. So we asked Joan to maybe try out a new pin, and again, this is just a, something for you to look at. I don't need any vote on it tonight by any means, so, but it's pretty simple, but it certainly says who we are and where we're from. That's all I have, and I would take any other questions.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to correct the record because I misspoke and said the vote was five to one, and it was five to zero.
Okay.
On the, on the motion about the turning lanes.
All right. Thank you. You got that, Courtney. Thank you. I think Will would like to speak to you.
I just have two things. One is the trails meeting on Monday, so we're having the open house for the trails, only 60 attendees, all elected officials aren't counted in the 60, so all those people I sent that email out to can come and go. It's open house style, so you kind of come and go as you please. There'll be like 12 stations with interactive stuff. We've got 450 surveys in already, which is really good, more than our comp plan, so, or strategic plan, still working on the comp plan, that's next year. But I'm hoping to push somewhere around 700, that was kind of our goal, hopefully we get there. But there's some interesting things coming in that I think you guys will find kind of surprising, but at the same time, like you kind of knew what was going to happen, and some of the arteries and corridors that they're looking at are pretty cool to think about. They have some 3D renderings, too, of the way that roadways could look, which is really awesome. So that is five to seven in Bostic on Monday. And if you haven't signed up, there's still some spots left out there.
So we can come anytime?
Yeah, you guys can come anytime between that five and seven. And then the cameras and the Wi-Fi, I was talking to the guys today, and they were saying around three weeks. So in three weeks, fully active cameras and then fully active Wi-Fi throughout the whole building. So there will be some training, not on the Wi-Fi, of course, it's come in and it's on, but on the cameras, and we're going to have to work on some processes and stuff that we'll probably bring back to you for approval, but just wanted to give you an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Anyone have something they want to report on that they've done recently?
Tom, did you want to add anything? I just got back your email.
Well, no, I mean, we'll just pass that out to everybody there.
Okay. I'll pass it out tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
The only thing is, I know most of us attended the groundbreaking there at the corner of 36 and Jefferson, and I am so excited about that. I mean, it's just, it's been a eyesore for a while, and I'm just super excited that action's being taken there, so.
And I'll add to that, it was always good to see new businesses, and it's part of the, I think, at least moderate growth strategy that we have in the town, and we've had, what, three or four ribbon cuttings over the last couple of weeks, too, and hopefully we have many more, another one tomorrow. So it's just really exciting, so to whoever gets the credit, you know, great job, everybody, and hopefully that continues. Agreed. And before Will's event on Monday, there are still a few spots to sign up for a blood drive that will be held in Bostic Gym, so go to the town's website, or the chamber has put it out as well.
What day is the blood drive, Chris?
Monday.
Monday, okay. All right. Thank you.
That's clear.
Anything else? How about Claim Docket? Any comments from the council on the Claim Docket?
Moved to approve the Claim Docket.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Can we have the Clerk Treasurer take a roll call vote on that?
Greg Van Leer?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom Pato?
Aye.
David Winters?
Aye.
Aye.
By a vote of five to zero, the Claim Docket is approved. If there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Can we just all agree?
Agreed.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye, Tom.
All's well that ends well.
Thanks, guys.
Lisa. Fast track therapy, rehabilitation.
Yeah, you got to say that, yeah.
36 and Jefferson Street, across from Mayberry Cafe, as you're heading west. Yeah, where Daners used to be. Yeah, yeah, yeah.